Welcome back, everybody. We left off with Chris. We were talking about going through the balance scorecard. And I don't know that we necessarily want to spend a lot of time on any one school, but if we have any questions about a particular school and what the results are. Mr. Parker?
I would like to just talk to Dr. All and staff about Central and Ridgeview. I think that this, we're at a point in time in our history where, and where we're at in regards to a bond issue, that we are at a real crossroads where we can do some, make some significant changes and significant improvements in those two schools. And I would really like for us to think outside the box on that. What would we see as a solution? And it would be beneficial for our students, and it would be beneficial for our community in that it would, has the potential of providing some real stimulus for our older neighborhoods in the core part of Olathe. And if we could find a solution for those two schools, be it a new school or within the neighborhoods, I'm not talking about closing the schools, but we need to have elementary schools in the core part of our community. And if we could, as a school district, if we could find a solution, I think it would be, it would be huge for the students, the families, and also for Olathe.
In that October special meeting, I've got, Greg and I visited just earlier this week, and he's, we just had kind of that conversation, what are our options? And just for consideration. And so he's working on some just general scenarios. They may be just pretty crude at that point of that discussion, or we may have more of that flushed out. But I think we have some options for, obviously, some renovations. The land size is different at those two schools. One of the things I think we like about, those schools are a little smaller, but a lot of the kids in those neighborhoods, their only way to school and from school is walking. And so access to extended learning programs and before-school and after-school or any activities typically is dependent upon the student getting there or getting home. There's no busing for that. So there is real advantage, even though they're smaller land sites and smaller schools. It may never be the same prototype or look that our other schools have. There might be some ways that we can do that, and that's what we need to do. The more immediate issue is that we just built those two classrooms at Central. And in visiting with Stephanie, she believes we may need two more classrooms by next fall at Central. And so we're trying to look through that right now in terms of our options. So there's the growth issue, then there's the quality of the facility, and we will do some out-of-the-box and bring that back to you.
And Dr. All, is there, and this is kind of an out-of-the-box question, potentially, is there any adjacent real estate, if you really think out-of-the-box for Central, that could be available?
Or for Ridgeview?
Yeah, Ridgeview, too.
You know, for something that was available and that would, might work for us?
We will, we will look at that, we will look at that very carefully.
And then the question being there, obviously, are there zoning restrictions that would have to be overcome as well?
Yeah, I'm hoping that, you know, the city has interest in the original town area, that, you know, this might be one of those discussions also to work with the city on. If we came up with some different options that they might take a look and say which would fit and best with their vision for those communities as well. So I think we can, we're doing some work on that area. It's one of those issues that, once you start looking at it, it's just one thing leads to another, leads to another. And I think, as the city said, five years ago, the growth that's in the original areas of Olathe just really wasn't anticipated by the city planner or as much by us. And it's a big change in the last several years. So that's something Chris always reminds us about. You know, he doesn't like to push his numbers out beyond, what, five or six years? And he knows that things can change. And fortunately for Johnson County and Olathe, we've got a lot of good jobs here, and that means that people are seeking a place to live close to where they can work, and particularly families that need affordable housing, and Olathe becomes a site for that, so.
I know we hear a lot of talk about age at Central. And personally, I like old. I think there's a lot to be said about old. And if you can take old and enhance it and keep that same, that same personality there, I think that's a real win-win.
If you just turn the architect loose and said, okay, carte blanche, what could you do? What would it look like? And I, you know, when you go to some other older areas, older communities that have redeveloped, amazing things can be done with older buildings. You just keep the footprint, but it looks brand-new when you're finished.
What about when you've got a site constraint going up?
I'm sorry?
What about going up?
Yeah, that's a question.
When we got a size-a-lot constraint, thinking outside the box.
We're talking outside the box here. I don't know what I'm talking about, but, you know, has that been considered? And what are the pros and cons of that in our future discussions?
We actually have one elementary school heritage, which was carved out of South's original school campus while I was principal there. And heritage does have part of its students on two levels, and it was because of the need to conserve space there. And there are pros and cons to that in a school setting. So Greg's more than willing, I think, to work out some options here for us to come back and take a look at. I think those are great suggestions. You know, I think we'd be very excited to seriously take a look at all those options for this area. And it'd probably be one of the most positive things we could do, you could do.
I don't want us to miss this opportunity.
Excuse me, as far as Ridgeview goes, how much of a true impediment? I know 35 makes a natural boundary, but is there ability to, in looking at all options, with Ridgeview being able to extend its boundary logistically past 35 to the east without causing problems?
I mean, really, you're not gonna wa, I mean, if anything, you're gonna wanna make Ridgeview's boundary smaller than bigger. I mean, Ridgeview's another school that, even though it might have a low capacity or capacity number of 83 percent, a room utilization number of 105 percent right now at that school. I mean, they're already looking at ways to create more space at Ridgeview.
Well, let me re-ask that, 'cause I didn't ask it properly. Take some adjoining schools to the east and extend their boundaries across the highway.
Yeah, I think a different school might be, you know, it's-
If I look at Tomahawk as an example.
Yeah, it's, historically, I-35 has been a geographic, man-made corridor that's developed this town, but it's also been one that's been very challenging to move, to look at the elementary school level, moving students back and forth. You know, that takes away all walkers, even in a make-do situation. It does mandate busing. It would mandate probably busing for extended learning and those kinds of things. But that doesn't say it's not an option you can put on the table if you want. But it's one of those that you kind of go look at, and then you back off when you start looking at some of those specifics. I think the, some of the other areas that are busy roads, you know, we've had to challenge some of our thinking on that to do some things with boundaries that maybe ideally you'd like to keep everything within, off of those arterial roads. But we'll look at that, too, to see if there's an option there.
Will there be in October also, if you look at those eight schools that are, needs that need, that have, need to be addressed immediately? We have solutions for five of those eight. We just talked about Central. So we have two, Countryside and Prairie Trail, that really don't have, will that be a part of the October discussion, too?
Can be. I think, you know, when you're looking, you've seen your options there. Central, I think we're quite aware that we need some options to provide for you. Countryside, you look at that room utilization, that's a function of that being a Title I school and some of the needs there at that school. We can look at, you know, we could move some programs out of that school. That might help relieve it temporarily. And the other one that's over there is a possible addition. I mean, that's, you know, or boundary adjustment, you know. So those are your three. We can talk, definitely talk about that next time.
When you talk about moving programs, Dr. All, out of there, does, how does that impact students in that population, or is it separate from the students in that population?
Well, it would be, I'm not sure exactly all the programs that are in Countryside, but I believe that there's some special education programs and ELL.
There's an ELL and an early childhood.
And an early childhood. So early childhood, moving that program away from the school, or an ELL, the challenge there is that that community serves, within its natural boundaries, many ELL students. So there might be a few students we could maybe shift to another ELL site. I'm not sure. We could sure take a look at that. But it does, if you move a program, you move kids.
Just the one thing with the ELL, last year, we had that there were 38 kids in the ELL program at Countryside. This is on your two-page summary of Countryside. Twenty-three of the ELL students were from within the Countryside attendance area. So there were 15 students transfer into Countryside for ELL. Countryside is close to transfers. The only kids that can transfer into Countryside are kids that need to come to there for specific programs, reasons such as ELL. The early childhood program had 15 students in it, and they were all from the Countryside attendance area.
So the reality is that if we have 23 out of the 37, if those are the numbers I heard, they'll sound like programs that need to probably remain at Countryside. Yeah, so you see yourself shifting to, then that leaves you, if you're not moving programs, that leaves you looking at boundaries, which we can look at, or leaves you looking at an addition.
And really with-
You can take, you can take boundaries out real quick, because your only adjacent schools are Indian Creek, which is 117 percent room capacity, and Heatherstone, which is 106.
And Walnut Grove.
And Walnut Grove, yeah, Walnut Grove is a stretch.
Well, I'm just telling, that does join it, too.
It's not contiguous.
So, but with process of elimination, then we may look in October at talking about addition? Is that something that?
And that, I think that, that's a process there that then we need to come back and say, where is our most immediate need? We may be able, when we say priority issues, Countryside, and I'm not saying this because I'd have to talk to staff about it, but it may not be in '07, '08 needed addition. It may be '08, '09. Central, there might need to be some things done sooner rather than later there, or temporary solution while we're doing a long-term solution. So I think we can come back. Those are good questions. Those help us come back and say to you, what alternatives do you want school by school there? Meadow Lane, you've got a solution. And then I think Prairie Trail, one of the pieces that helped us this year a little bit with Prairie Trail is that it did not grow, it was 50 students less than what we had projected it to be. So we're seeing a little slowdown there in that area, probably due to the housing market right now. And that is helping us a little bit with Prairie Trail. It doesn't take care of its long-term issues, but it does help just a little bit.
Yeah, originally, we were projecting that's going to be about 850, and it's only at 800. I mean, it's still our second-biggest junior high school with the projection for continued growth.
And that's where the ninth junior high discussion needs to come into play along with, so you've got there new schools. See, that's the only one in that red list of schools where new school is one of your alternatives, boundary adjustment, or construction to add on in addition. All of those have implications one way or the other. Some of them might be delay a ninth junior high a little bit, but probably aren't a long-term solution. Probably your only long-term solution there is the ninth junior high. But you do have three different pieces there that we can come back and give you the alternatives. And if that's a good way for us to take this red group and come back and give you some alternatives on those where you don't have recommended solutions, that would be another chunk that we could tackle, probably along with reviewing the task force recommendations on the existing schools. Because in a sense, tonight's discussion has moved right into, I think, the existing schools issue, which, you know, it's also interrelated. It's hard to separate out one from the other. It really is.
And the Prairie Trail discussion would include options associated with Santa Fe Trail as well?
Well, then when you start looking at boundary, if you start looking at boundaries, then you would go back to your map, and you start looking where you would have capacity. And so that becomes part of that discussion and what that looks like. And then what between those neighborhoods does Chris project growth in the long term?
But more than likely, I mean, Prairie Trail joins two junior highs, Oregon Trail and Santa Fe Trail.
Chris, I've got a question on Indian Trail.
Okay.
In the yellow section. And you touched on it earlier, but I didn't catch exactly. Why is that looked at as an emerging issue? What are the factors that are, with 54 and a 61 percent? What are the factors that are causing that to be in this caution?
It's not, I mean, Indian Trail is a school, I mean, once the school dropped below 500 students this year, it kind of raised a little bit of a flag to, at least to myself. Maybe not to teaching and learning, but myself there. And it's not, it's definitely something that is a crucial thing that has to be addressed right now. But the available capacity at Indian Trail could lend itself to solving some other schools that need enrollment relief.
So it's kind of on there for the opposite reason of most of the others?
Oh, definitely. Indian Trail is not on there because it's growing rapidly.
That's what I wanted to confirm, because I didn't think of it that way when I first saw it.
The same as Green Springs. In the green section under the long-term issues, Green Springs is not on this sheet because it's growing rapidly. It's just, it's the opposite issue, yes.
One question on Indian Trail, though, and I would ask on teaching and learning. If you talk about diversity of population, is this a school that we need to, that is receiving additional services?
It is receiving additional services. It is an ELL site, for example. But also, there is a pro and a con to getting smaller. While there are some benefits to that, there are also some cons to being able to staff appropriately and give the kind of options. I was just talking with Principal Mrs. Merrin just the other day, and that's an area that we have to balance in there, that really could probably handle some additional enrollment, even though they have a diverse population and growing diverse, not that many students in that ELL program. So I think we need to also look at, there would be some benefits to growing a school a bit at the secondary level, not unlike what many people are determining with high school size, that sometimes too small cuts down choices and opportunities, makes it constrained on the scheduling.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Grelb, just out of curiosity, what's causing the Walnut Grove growth to go? I know we've got the new community there along 119th Street. Is that the main cause of factor?
That would be the projection there, the Avignon Village there, which is a collection of single-family and multifamily homes, yes. That's the new construction, yeah. That'd be causing that growth.
Now, that's a retirement community. I know it's got the apartment community adjacent to it.
There's gonna be a few, I mean, there is a retirement community in the area. There's, the Catholic Church is doing Santa Maria to the north of it. But there's also some, there's, the apartments going up right now. There's also gonna be some straight four-bedroom, single-family homes built in that area as well. There's gonna be some smaller homes. There's gonna be a variety of housing products, apartments, smaller villa types, and then some four-bedroom homes.
Any other questions on the school capacity scorecard? Well, Chris, I know it's easy for us to sit here and speak a few words, and you've got to go do hours of work. But we want you to know how much we appreciate this information, and we understand a lot of it is still being updated, and it's really helping us to hone in on the important things we have to focus on as we try to make these decisions. So thank you for your work, and all those who have had input in this discussion here tonight. We appreciate that.
I just got Kevin.
Go ahead.
One quick question, you know, since we're talking what-ifs and everything, just looking at the elementary life skills centers, the ELL centers, and everything else, there's a lot of them Title I schools centered around the core area. So I guess I'd like to, since we're thinking outside the box, give some consideration of how the Mill Creek Center could be effectively utilized. It's right in the center of everything.
Okay.
Not necessarily the existing buildings there.
Right.
Site itself.
I guess my thoughts on that, at some point in time, I assume there'll be an entire separate discussion on the Mill Creek Center as far as the pros and cons of moving out versus staying.
And we need to have that presentation.
That's coming.
Okay, good, thank you.
That's the fourth Thursday.
Is that the fourth Thursday?
That's Thanksgiving night, I think we're doing an hour.
As long as there's cheesecake and turkey.
Dr. All's cooking.
There's five Thursdays in November, remember?
Going after your record again, are you?
Thank you, Chris. We're gonna move into a presentation on some of the basics of bond financing. Mr. Deener's going to present for us. And this is informational as we consider potential size of a future bond issue and how that affects taxation, mill levies, et cetera. And Mr. Deener, welcome. Good to have you here.
Yes.
The floor is yours, sir.
Thank you very much. A lot of the information that we're gonna be providing this evening was, has been presented to the bond task force. They've seen this, and a lot of you, by attending those presentations, have already seen it. But we did want to review it and make sure that there's a foundation for moving forward. We're not going to give a lot of details as far as the actual financing, but we're going to set the stage for the parameters by which we might be able to look at that as we move forward. Quickly, some review topics. When we look at bond funds, there's essentially, we can say that there are, as we compare it, there's operating funds, there's capital outlay funds, and there's bond funds. And those three are probably the biggest three that we talk about. But we need to understand the differences in them and how they provide the services for the district. Operating funds provide, you know, for the things that we normally think about for the day-to-day operations. The capital outlay funds essentially provide for those things that are going to be necessary for capital improvements, for renovations, replacement of things, not so much buying when we're constructing new projects, but more the replacement cycles of the computers, the replacement cycles of the tracks and equipment and capital projects like that. For bond funds, then, obviously, for the new construction, the new facilities. And as it addresses for technology, typically, that then is left for those large projects of bringing something to scale. Once we've found a technology implementation or a foundation of equipment that is necessary, then many times the bond funds are used to bring all the district up to that same level that now we feel is important to be maintained. As we look at bond financing, just a few terms that we talk about, as we look at the fact that it allows us to buy and borrow long-term debt, we sell the bonds, then obviously we have to pay them back with interest. And essentially, it's for capital projects. There is statutory authority that provides for us to have access to these funds. And so we use bond counsel to make sure that we're legal and aligned with those statutes every step of the way. Bond proceeds can be used for the obvious, acquiring sites, the actual construction, even school buses. Now, that doesn't apply to us, because we contract that service out, but we put it there because that is something in the statute that is allowed for. What it cannot be used for are salaries, utilities, and instructional supplies. And many times when we're out in the community, people will ask us, you know, they have a misunderstanding of, we just passed that large bond election at some point in time. Why are you now talking about operational problems with maybe opening Olathe Northwest? And what they don't understand is that when you open a large school or even an elementary school, it does impact the operating costs from a standpoint of just the day-to-day operations that cannot be covered and supported with bond funds.
Mr. Deener, could you just draw one clarification again on the difference between furnishing and equipping a building versus instructional supplies?
Yes. Furnishing and equipment is going to be something that can be, amateurs are identified as a long-term product. It's going to have a lifetime that's more than just a year or two, and it is not something that is used with, is not, I used the wrong terminology. It's not-
Not a consumable.
Consumed with use, so to speak.
So would a computer fit into that category?
Yes. And therefore, they can fall into the category of bond, versus the supply of materials are used, they don't have any long-term lasting effect.
Okay, great. Thank you.
How are bonds issued? Key point here that we need to emphasize is that there's a distinction between a bond election and a bond issuance, just using the last couple of years' example. In 2003, there was a bond election of 73.5 million. That was the bond election, the size of it, 73 and a half million. It was issued in two separate components. I think it was like a 40 million and a 33 and a half, the last of which was issued last spring. So as we move forward, and as we're talking with our public about the size of the election, they need to understand that the size, while it's extremely important as to what projects it can encompass, it's still going to be at the discretion of the board. We'll talk about that in more detail here in just a few more slides. It's still up to the board to determine how that's going to be issued, how quickly the projects need to be implemented to meet our priorities, to meet our needs, but also balance the impact, the financial impact on the community. As we look at the transaction participants, these people are going to be key as we move forward. Obviously, the board and the decisions that you're going to be making. Our independent financial advisor, Marty Noye, and Tom Calico, who are with Springstead, our bond counsel, Al Wilkinson, who is with Gilmar and Bell, and the feasibility consultants, our engineers and architects, as they make the drawings that are submitted to the state to meet those needs as far as state approval. Typical considerations. There are about eight factors that we'd like to talk about. And the first is the amount of the issue, and I touched on that a little while ago. It's the actual amount of the election, the interest rates that are going to be anticipated. We are challenging Chris with his projections for enrollment growth many years out. We have the same challenge in trying to provide the board information on what it's going to have as an impact on our mill levies, simply not really having a good crystal ball as to what the interest rates are going to be. If anyone on the board would like to volunteer for that particular task, I'd welcome your input on that, because that is difficult. But it's something that we have to consider if we're going to be giving you information by which you're going to be making decisions on. Amortization schedule, the actual payment schedule that you're going to be making determination on how we pay those bonds out. We're gonna pay them out over 10 years, 12 years, 30 years. You'll be making the same kind of decisions that our community makes every time they buy a new home, or every time they refinance the home. How quickly do we want to pay this out? Do we want to pay it over 10 years? Do we want a 15-year note or a 30-year note? Assessed valuation growth, once again, I'm open to any crystal balls that you might have here. We had 14 percent increases in assessed valuation in the mid-'90s. That dropped to 4 and 5 percent for a couple of years in around 2000, 2001, and now it's been up to 8 percent the last two years. So as we project ahead with those values, it helps tell us the breadth, so to speak, of the tax base that's going to support any levies that we're going to be assessing. And the number that you use there can make a rosier-type projection on how that's going to impact our taxpayers, or it can be a very depressing way of looking at it. So once again, we have to sort of really be careful on how we're making those projections.
Well, and Mr. Deener, we don't just come up with those numbers on our own. You consult with the county when you look at those figures. I mean, they, I'm sure they do a lot of analysis about those kinds of things, because they're the ones that have to do all the valuations.
Yes, they do. State aid, currently, two years ago, the state aid for our bond projects was 0 percent. It went to 7 percent last year, which sort of surprised us. That actually went up to 8 percent. And there's some indicators that would say that might even creep up a little higher in the next coming years. Something that we probably don't want to bank on as we make our projections, but it is something that we need to consider. There's also the very possibility that that could drop again. The legislature could very easily decide that the qualifiers or the formula by which this is determined, wealth in support of state aid for bond elections, could actually impact us negatively to where that state aid would actually go back to zero, where it was until two years ago.
Mr. Deener, that attribute, is it based on the amount at time of issue, or is it based on the amount of prevailing debt you have in that given year?
At time of issue.
At time of issue. So that's grandfathered, then, whether the state law changes?
I lied.
Okay.
No, well, I was incorrect. It's, right now, that, the way that's stated, it's in two forms. All bonds prior to 1992 has one factor, all bonds after 1992. So anything that we have issued since 1992, with the exception of refinancing, is at that 8 percent. So anything forward, according to the way it's written at this time, would fall into that 8 percent.
And when that's changed, do they typically draw the starting line at the year that the change is incurred? change is incurred, so they wouldn't go all the way back to ninety-two? They would just say as of 2007, as an example, anything forward from that would, would get the new rate?
It could be any of those scenarios. I mean, that, that would totally depend on how they wrote that. They could write it that way or our grandfather in.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
I mean, that's back to where we're subject to the legislature. And if they change it, then it affects the way we have to assess a mill, estimate a mill levy for it, to fund it for that next business year.
Exactly correct.
And you, you said that that, that's sort of a, what do you call it, a wealth factor?
Yes, uh-huh. It's exactly what it is.
So demographics could change that also?
Yes. If, if our population-
According to the current, according to the current formula.
Uh-huh.
If our demographics change, that could change.
Correct.
Okay.
If our, if our enrollment change grows faster than our assessed valuation, that's going to make our wealth factor less.
It's not a demographic change. It's, it's based on population and, right, not the wealth of the individual members of the population.
Well, as a whole, it's the assessed valuation of the whole district, whether that's commercial or residential.
Right. That's, that's that factor plus your population growth, but not the changing demographics of students.
I guess I was trying to indicate that-
That is a correct statement. And I'm sorry if I missed that.
I was just trying to indicate that things could change according to the current formula to affect that too, not, not necessarily the legislator changing, legislation, legislatures.
And I took from your demographics, meaning quantity, enrollment and size.
Yeah.
I might have stretched that. The interest earned from the bond proceeds, that's also a calculation because once the bonds are sold, then there's a time period by which we invest those funds prior to the actual expenditure, prior to the actual construction company submitting a bill, Mr. Thomason, approving that bill for payment for eighty thousand. We draw from that, and now we're gaining interest on eighty thousand dollars fewer dollars. But we're being invested during that whole period of time. And what that interest rate is during that time impacts what we're doing.
And do we have to reimburse the state for the interest? If you could clarify my memory on that?
There's a term arbitrage that is a federal issue, that if our interest that we're gaining are accruing during the time of investments is higher than the interest that we're paying our bonds, we're, we're not eligible for that. And that is going to be something that, after it's all said and done, we have to do an arbitrage calculation, determine how much to the good we created for our own community so that we can pay that back to the federal government.
And I assume that we're cognizant of that as it's happening and we're accruing that?
Yes.
Okay, very good.
In these days, we're going to get a big bill on that because short-term rates are up and long-term rates are down, so we're getting a lot of arbitrage. And Jim, that, that goes back to the IRS, doesn't go back to the state.
Right.
That money goes to the federal government.
Correct.
And that's every five years we make that calculation? Do I remember that right?
If I remember correctly, it has to be done within five years of the close of the bond.
Okay, yeah.
And finally, the impact on the total district levy. And we can't emphasize this enough, especially when we get to the slides that are coming up. We're only talking about one of the six levy funds right now. And, and this will be even more important when we hit the bar graph on the total district mill levy a few slides down. But right now, in the next couple of slides, let's remember that we're talking about just one of the six levy funds. For discussion purposes, let's look at a hundred million dollar bond election, where the first issue is for fifty million. That's just for easy calculation. If that were to be accomplished, we had an election for a hundred million, and the first issuance occurred relatively quickly for fifty million, that would ultimately have, under our current projections, based on our most recent structure of those payments-
Which was?
Was last spring.
What kind of amortization is on that?
That was a fifteen-year. Would be somewhere in the vicinity of one and a half to two mills.
So this would be on a fifteen-year ann.
Yes. The way this one was projected. That one and a half to two mills would have an impact on the, what is still considered to be an average home of about a hundred eighty-six thousand, around three dollars and fifty cents per month. Just to give a comparison, if we were to, instead of having a hundred and, a hundred million bond election, if we were to have a two-hundred-and-seventy-five million dollar bond election and had initially a fifty million dollar issuance, it would have the same results. In oh-seven, oh-eight, it would still have an impact of one and a half to two mills, which is roughly three and a half dollars per month or forty dollars, two dollars for year, for the year. Now, it doesn't take a lot of thought, though, to realize that the two-hundred-and-seventy-five million then will have longer lasting implications on taxpayers. And that's where it gets fuzzy. And that's where, you know, at this point in time, I go back to the factors and would ask the board, perhaps at this point in time or as time moves on, to, to provide us maybe some guidance from your perspective. Because one of the things that we can do, and one of the things we want to do, and it presents the same challenge that Chris has, there's eight factors there. Every one of those factors has six criteria of its own. And so if you changed one of those criteria and kept everything else the same, and then kept doing that, we could make a very large book for you and overwhelm you with data. And so what we need to, to, to move forward is to have some feel for maybe your thoughts on what might be good parameters to work with, so that when we come back to you with information by which you need to make decisions on, we can actually give you something that's useful to you and beneficial and not just so much data that it's, it's almost hard to, to work through it. So you might think about that, if you have any comments tonight, you can share those or we can move forward, and that's something that we can continue to do, work with.
May I ask you a question about that? Kind of along those lines, has it been the history with our bond issues? As you can recall, the last one, we did two issuances on one bond that was voted in.
The last two bonds were sixty million and seventy-three and a half, and those were two issuances. The nineteen ninety-seven bond was a hundred and twenty-three million, and we had three issuances on that one.
As we go through and we make the determination, I'm trying to recall here on whether we do a, a longer-term amortization versus a shorter term, is that a stipulation that we have to make before we do the issuance, so they know which rate to propose, or is it the other way around? Meaning that we get the proposed rate and then we determine how fast we want to pay it back?
Answer this for, Mr. Churchman, are you, are you talking about before we have the election or, once the election's done and we decide that we're going to now have the first issuance, we decide how much the issuance needs to be based on the projects that are the highest priority to be taking place now. And at that point in time, we go out for a bid. And when we go out for a bid, yes, it's at that point in time that we typically, well, historically, we've always said, we want a fifteen-year bid. I, I don't think that we can, we can, I can ask the question again, but I don't believe that we can ask for a variance on that.
Yeah, okay. I didn't think so. It does. I just wanted to confirm that.
Is that what you were asking?
Yes, it was.
Mr. Deaner, we could ask for a twenty-year bid, though, could we not?
We could ask for a twenty-year bid. But I don't, I don't think that we, we have never done it that way, so I'm thinking it's because it doesn't benefit us to do that, or at least it would make it, the market so confusing that it would be hard to compare. We can explore that, yeah.
No, I'm not saying we should do that. I was just trying to get clarification as to how we did do it.
I, I don't think we've ever done that.
Yeah. And then back to Mr. Gilmore's points on the eight factors, a lot of those really are outside our control. We can certainly give opinions on them. I think the one that, that we can give you the, the strongest guidance on is number eight, impact on total district levy. Would you agree with that?
On, on where you'd like us to be?
That, that's correct. I mean, as far as interest rates and assessed valuation, I go back to what Mr. Gilmore said, that-
A lot of it's out of our hand.
Yep.
Yeah, and number three, the amortization schedule.
Certainly on that one as well.
I, I think also, we have a financial consultant on this, so we're going to prepare you some scenarios that give you some options that we think are best practices, that also fit both the needs of the school district and, and in relationship to the other issuances that are passed behind us and when those are coming off and what that does, you know. So, you know, we'll give some, we'll get some professional guidance on that as well. And Gary's just getting some areas that I think we can obviously bring a look back at, and that would be the amortization schedule. And then what would be our best projections on interest rates, and, and that's where Marty Noe comes in to assist us on that, so.
And then the slide that we talked about as far as historically, and, and we've seen this slide, and I use it in, in many different applications, but for this evening's purpose, this is the total district mill levy, and the different colored bars represent the six different levy funds as they build up to the total district mill levy. And the fifty-nine million, the hundred-and-twenty-four million, the sixty million, and seventy-three and a half represent the bond elections that occurred in that year. And so if, if you looked at a five-year span in here, or let, let's say, take a six-year span, we can show you that during that time period, and let, let, well, I'm, I'm sorry, let's don't include this sixth one, let's just include these five that cover the hundred-and-twenty-four and the sixty. That represents essentially a hundred and eighty-four million dollars of debt. And we can see what the board was able to do with the total district mill levy during that time. And that is to be able to maintain a stable levy. And so while during that time, maybe any one year, the bond and interest portion of that could have increased, there are the other five levies that to some degree are flexible to be worked with to maintain the stable levy. Now, obviously, and, and it may have been because we pushed it that out as far as we could, probably, in retrospect, these last three years, the levy should have been allowed to increase a little bit because all of a sudden then we had a five-year bump. And at that point in time, there was no other alternative, and it was a five-mill increase. And that was, in essence, one might say that was a little pent-up pressure to increase the levy that maybe was held down during the years prior to that. But I think, I think the key point is that the board does have control to some degree over the total levy and trying to maintain stability over time.
I think another factor in there, Gary, is we also did a refunding during this timeframe in the last few years, which we actually accelerated the repayment of some of the debt to save a bunch of interest when rates were low.
That's exactly right.
All right. And I mean, it was over a million dollars, if I remember.
Twice that happened, uh-huh.
Yeah. So that has an impact on the mill levy too.
Yes.
Because we have to pay those off sooner than we anticipated.
What is our current debt? There's currently twelve issuances. And I think, the thing I like about this graph is that, as bizarre as it looks, it does show to some extent what can be done from a creative standpoint to somewhat level out the levies. During, like, for example, this yellow bar here, that was used to sort of fill in what would have been a declining levy to some, to more of a consistent levy fund over that period of time that paid off that debt quicker. And in essence, what you're talking about right now, Mr. Gilmore, is, is exactly that issuance right there, that we were able to pay that off and sort of fill that void. Potentially, the board could have, at that point in time, allowed the levy to have dropped, perhaps substantially during that time period, but rather chose to have the cost savings of paying off the levy quicker as an alternative. So these are the current twelve. They, the last one is to be, is, which was the last one we issued in the spring, fifteen years from 2006 is right at 2021. And so that's when it's due to be paid off.
Mr. Deaner, was that the first time that we used the fifteen-year amortization?
No, I think we've used that many times in the nineties. I think in the, in the two thousands, it's been more the ten and the twelve-year payback until we did the fifteen.
Okay. Have we ever gone longer than fifteen?
Not to my awareness.
Okay.
But that is something, I, I need to check that again to make sure. Because I'll have to go back to the eighties to check that out.
Didn't we go less than ten one time? Seems like we did a technology issuance for less than ten, but I, maybe I'm confused.
It might have been a refunding. Dr. George was saying that may be true.
Mr. Deaner, could you go back to the previous slide?
Uh-huh.
And Dr. Drummond, you could help us a little bit with this from a historical standpoint. It's been my understanding, since I've been on the board, that the board has always had a philosophical understanding and agreement. I guess you could say that we would maintain the bond and interest mill levy at twenty?
Twenty or less.
Twenty or less.
Again, to provide some stability. And some of what wasn't mentioned on these years that you see some stability was the board trying to respond to the economy as well. The economy was kind of sluggish in those, you know, oh-one, oh-two, oh-three, oh-four. So we were trying to keep the mill levy stable and manipulated the other funds in, in order to do that to some extent. And we had the ability to do that because we had tried to forecast as best we could what the interest rates were going to be, what the taxation rates were going to be, what the valuation rates were going to be, as best you can, looking out. So you have some flexibility to work with those funds without shooting yourself in the foot, to be able to maintain and be able to communicate to the citizens that we're going to try to maintain a, a level levy as much as we possibly can, given all the circumstances around there. Is that something magic? No, but it was just a commitment we'd made to try to keep our bond and interest as stable as possible so that as the other funds were going up and down, we could be able to work all the funds together to be able to have some stable mill levy that was reasonable for the citizens.
I'll bring that up, Mr. Deaner, because I think you're asking for some guidance. And from my perspective, I'm only one of seven. I, I would feel pretty strongly that we should try to main, in, in any bond issue that, issuance that we would go forward, we would continue to try to adhere to that practice of maintaining our bond and interest mill levy no more than twenty mills.
My, my only observation.
I'm sorry?
My only observation would be, I mean, that's great input. My observation would be that the twenty mills was, I think, sort of set as a standard based on assumptions of using bond elections for growth only. We're being challenged this time to not only do growth, but to do some reconstruction, to go back and do some things we've never done before.
We need to rethink that twenty mills, then.
I, I would just challenge us to rethink that possibly.
We're currently roughly at, what, eighteen and a half mills?
I'm sorry?
We're at seventeen point three, something like that.
Three mills?
The last time we were at twenty was in ninety-seven, ninety-eight.
So we had some- And I, I hope that makes sense, but we've only, that mill levy was set only by building new buildings, not really going back and trying to renovate and bring up to scale to standards that we feel are necessary.
We had some projects like adding multipurpose rooms, but it took well over a decade to do three schools at a time. The problem is, we're adding schools every year. You start adding up the total schools, and every year that goes by, the problem just gets bigger. And I think that, that, I think some of the things you're going to have to look at is how long that issuance is going to be, you know, whether fifteen years or other school districts use twenty, you know, whether you can look at that or not, whether taxpayers today or taxpayers in the future that are getting the benefit of the facilities are going to, you know, there's so many different ways to look at this. But I think what our goal is here is to try to give you the background to tell you that there are options. People have a tendency to just look at a number. And, you know, we're going to look for ways to bring different scenarios back with lower numbers to you, okay? That's, that's number one. And then secondly, there are going to be then these other considerations that we can look at to see, can we achieve some of the things that we might want to do at Central and Ridgeview that actually aren't on that bond list at any price right now?
I would-
You know, so that, that's the piece that we'll have to wrestle with. But I think there are going to be some of these things to give you that are, are really viable options for you to look at, and then you're going to have to make the-
Yeah.
I would also suggest that, not contrary necessarily to what you're saying, but there, there was a period of time there that we invested a lot of money through bond, bond funds for technology, which is, would be similar to capital outlay, upgrading and things like that.
Correct.
So whereas we didn't do buildings, we did a lot of technology for a period of time, significant amount of technology. So I think that's almost a corollary to using bond funds for, you know, improving buildings and roofs and air conditioners and all that kind of stuff.
That's a good point.
Other piece of that, that I think that, based on what Harland said, and what I kind of believe as well, is we also have the option to play with a capital outlay a little bit. If, in fact, we as a board choose to fund some of these smaller projects with capital outlay and not bond and interest, then we can move our capital outlay up a mill or two, or whatever we decide, and save the bond issue and the long-term expense for that, you know, pay me now instead of pay me later. So I think that's another factor that we need to take in consideration with some of the smaller projects, some of the air conditioners, heating, doors, all those kinds of things that don't, that are- that are, that are on this long list as well.
In the same degree, and I don't want anybody to fall out of their chair, but I think cash reserves needs to be in that same discussion.
I was waiting for you to say that.
Yeah, I'm surprised that that.
I didn't want to disappoint you.
Here it is, eight-thirty, and it didn't come up till now.
We got to look at all those, and one, let me add one more thing to the mix. Gary, one of the things I want to know as we go forward with this discussion is, do we have to do a fifteen-year for everything? Or can we do a blend? We're going to do X amount in five, X amount in ten? Because to me, there are probably some things, technology things, which maybe we don't think the capital outlay money's there, but we're going to blend the issue in a certain way, because you get cheaper money with the shorter, well, excepted these days, but you tend to get normally cheaper money for the shorter term and.
We have a history of that, so we can do that for sure.
Good.
We can do that. And, you know, back to what Jim said regarding the reserves, one way to ensure ourselves a little bit if we spend our reserves is capital outlay, that we can always come back and increase capital outlay if we're getting a little spooked because of what's going on in Topeka.
Right.
And deal with it from that perspective, so we perhaps can spend our, our reserves more than we're comfortable with, knowing that we can always come back the following year or two, increase our capital outlay to help us catch up with any reserves we need at that point. So, it's a calculated risk, but something we could do, and it might be beneficial for us, at least to consider it.
The only other caution I would make is that it's always easy to look back and to see what took place. When we start providing you projections, which you're going to want to have on if we have a two-hundred-million-dollar election, and how that's going to be phased out over six years, and projecting all of that, what it's going to look like, and the total increase in mill levy each year as that's implemented, we're going to have to understand that we can only be looking at the bond and interest at that time. I mean, I don't think there's any way we can ask ourselves to do a projection of total levy, because three years out, knowing what the levy's going to be for BOTA, or for LOBR, whether or not sales tax exists and all those kind of things, that's asking an awful lot in one analytical tool. So, if you don't, if you don't agree, and would challenge, like to challenge me to include that in all the analysis, I'll sure try. But typically, what we would probably do is just look at bond and interest by itself, and how that impact is going to be, and then look historically at what you've been able to do with the total district levy. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I think that's the best we can do, Gary, but we'll ask you to do better.
Okay.
It's the best the Board can do, but you can do better.
I will try.
Mr. Deaner, what, if we were to go out hypothetically for a bond election of X, and through, as the years progress, and, and we, we look at these different options that we have to fund things, and, and find ways to do it more immediate and save long-term costs, I assume there's, there's no obligation to fulfill that ultimate election amount? Is that a correct statement? I mean, if we found other ways to fund that.
Yes. I, I, I need to be careful. I, I think that there is definitely an obligation to complete all the projects.
Well, yeah, I'm not talking about not completing the projects, I'm talking about actually issuing that amount of bonds.
That amount of bond. I think if we can show that we have completed all the projects, then I think that we have done our due diligence. The, the concern being is that typically, there are going to be open-ended projects that are going to be on that list, that we have said we're going to, we know that we can't, let's say, let's look at the buildings that have trouble, have difficulties with not having doors, they're open classrooms, and that we'd like to make a dent in maybe three or four of those. Well, if we can make a dent into five or six of them because of some other conditions, then we probably want to do that. But that flexibility does exist.
Okay, great, thank you.
Did that?
It did.
Okay.
Is there any way to cancel a bond? I mean, once you've had an election, I know it might be unthinkable, but I'm just, you know.
The, the closest to canceling it would be to expand it. In other words, if we found three years out that the pressures on the mill levy were so great that we didn't feel like we could make that next issuance, it would just simply be a matter of postponing those priority projects for another year or two. I don't, there's not any concern with that, other than the public concern of, I thought we voted for something with anticipation it was going to be done on a timely basis. So, I mean, you just have to weigh the political ramifications.
The reality is, once the voters approve it, there's not a timeline that expires.
No.
That authority for us is there.
The authority is yours.
We got to use it for what we said we were going to use it for.
Right.
And every year, you're faced with an issuance, just like last spring, you have that current data to determine how much of that issuance you want. So, let's say it's a case where maybe it's only thirty million that year, you identify which projects are going to go forward, and another year it could be eighty million. Again, that's an individual decision by issuance, it's just the capacity is there to issue that, but you haven't incurred that debt until you issue it. And I think that's where, that's where the, the control of the Board for the future, that there's a comfort level in that, on the issuance part, and that's why he was stressing that at the very beginning.
Good.
Mr. Deaner, as I understand it, there, there isn't a timeline for issuance?
There is not.
We can, okay, we can approve it, but we can go seven years out to issue it?
Yes.
So, that, okay.
One of the problems of delaying the issuance over too great a time is that Greg's numbers on estimated costs with construction costs going up.
Thank you.
And those kinds of things become another factor, but then, if it were a, a decision had been made, that would be part of the discussion at that time.
My point was that if, if alternative sources come available, capital outlay or something like that, and we use, and we deal with some of the projects through that means, that we don't have to issue the bonds right at that time to take care of that project because we took care of it through another means. Maybe the BOTA will increase, we get more money there, we don't know. So, that's my point, I think that might have been Jim's point.
Exactly, it was, thank you.
Okay. And we looked at the current elections. And, and in closing, just to put in perspective, once again, I think we've seen this slide before, what some of our neighboring districts have done, and right beside the school district, we've given their enrollment size, just to give you some proportionality. There are some rather large bond elections that have occurred around us, most notably in Blue Valley in two thousand and five, a two-hundred, almost eighty-million-dollar election. And so, it's not beyond the scope of reason that that is something that's available in our community. And conclude then, historical bond history, and I would point out again to our public that this is something that's on our web, and anyone can go to look at it. And basically, what we've done here is we're providing information on all the elections that have occurred since nineteen sixty-five, with some analysis of, you know, what new buildings were built during that time, the dollars that were part of that election, and the purpose. And this provides, I think, a good one-page summary of some of the history there, so. With that, are there any additional questions that you might have?
Just one point I'd like to reaffirm, that's a piece to the puzzle, and that's to Ms. Lyon about the technology costs. I know the, the bond, the bond task force came up with twenty-seven million dollars, roughly, in needs, and I'm just wanting to draw the correlation between twenty-five-million-dollar roadmap that we as a Board approved, and I know we've incurred part of that already, so just trying to understand that delta, and what exactly is that delta? Now, how much of the twenty-five have we spent to date, and then how do we bridge that to the twenty-seven?
And I believe I have that document, and I believe I have all those figures, but I don't have them with me tonight.
Okay, so just, yeah, it's not an immediate thing, but it's just one of those questions that's out there.
But we have continued to, to plug away and continue to get those digital classrooms installed. As you know, we're doing another two-hundred, that bid will come to you in November. So, we are continuing to plug away and use capital outlay dollars, the additional capital outlay dollars that we recently approved. And so, it does continue to drop that bond amount out of technology as we can plug away at, at capital outlay dollars with that.
Okay.
And I, I have all that documented, I just don't have it here.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Deaner. Well, that brings us to the end of our presentations of, on the agenda, so the rest is just whatever discussion we might want to have before we adjourn. Any thoughts or comments? I want to ask Dr. All when we get through here, just to kind of summarize where we're headed at our next special meeting in, in October. And we also need to find out if we've got conflicts with that date. Mrs. Wilhelm mentioned before she left, she thought we had two board members with conflicts on that third Thursday, I don't know if that.
I have a conflict, I'll be out of town.
But that's you and her, I assume, Dr. Drummond. So, we may want to get with Dr. All and suggest alternatives that work in our schedule to see if we can possibly do that. But barring that, what are your thoughts about all we've heard tonight? And we want to make sure we give major questions, concerns to Dr. All, and so the staff can work on that between now and our next meeting to make it the most productive time possible.
Just.
Go ahead, Mr. Parker. I'm still thinking what I want to say.
Okay, Dr. All, I know we talked at our last board meeting, what the communication process was going to be in the community, can you talk a little bit about what progress we're making in that arena?
I'd be glad to. First of all, since the last meeting, we have developed a schedule of a feedback process. This is sort of our phase-one feedback, it doesn't have to be the last step of this process. We have created feedback sessions around our eight junior high feeder schools. That covers, we're gaining feedback from you, for you, for the Board, on the major components of the bond, and probably the one that has the most discussion around that, that needs the most information piece, has to do with maybe changing the grade level configuration, what that means. So, the first one was last Monday night at Frontier, the next one is next week, I think on the twenty-eighth, I think I sent a schedule of that. Those are open in those feeder areas, but if someone can't come to one date in a feeder area, they can come to the other. Secondly, we've been doing those same kinds of sessions internally with staff, because our staff have questions about this, so there's been a long series in that particular area. October twenty-fourth, at the district site council meeting, the site council will, each site council will have an opportunity, as a site council, to provide some input for the Board of Education. Again, each of these times are an opportunity for the community to hear more information, give feedback. And my hope is, then, at the November special meeting, that you will get some of that feedback, and in the meantime, you know, I'm willing to go where I need to go to address questions, or if you see opportunities for that. We may want to come back and do some additional forms after we get through this process, but this is a pretty tight timeline between now and October twenty-fourth. I mean, we're out at least eight nights, plus the twenty-fourth between now and October. That has also made decrease some of the flexibility in changing a special meeting date, because we also have parent-teacher conferences in October, and, and it's, it's busy between now and then, but I can assure you that we're doing that. We have information on our website, so the public can go to the website in that area. We have information from the bond task force, and we're glad to make copies of that information for others who might want to have written information and copies of that, so we'll work on a process to do that as well.
Dr. All, a couple of comments, and also to Mr. Gilmore and the rest of the Board. We talked during our last meeting about the need to make this a grassroots buy-in to the, the bond initiative, and I think, while this is an atypical setting for a special meeting, my, my view is that we need to televise all these meetings, we need to expose the community to them as best we can.
Yeah.
And, and this is an opportunity in this forum to do that. The other thing that I don't want to, this to come across as a criticism, but just something for staff to be cognizant of, I am hearing from parents across the district about not being apprised of these meetings, and I think we just need to be ever focused on making sure that the, the notifications are getting out, if we're relying on our school principals to do that, to make sure that the parents are aware of the schedules. I don't know if we're sending those home in backpacks, or what that, what that format is, but just that we continue to, to focus on that and make sure that we're communicating as best we can.
I think that's one thing, too. If someone should, I, I think one, one of the meetings this week, and probably next are the two, that were the most immediate due to scheduling, and I would say that if there's anybody in the Frontier Trail area that was not aware that these dates are forthcoming, and they stretch out through October, we, I did ask Dr. Manikowski to follow up with principals to make sure that we're getting communication out, where there are newsletters and those, I mean, they're going home with students, they need to also go home possibly in newsletters that are coming out, but in some cases, there may be a timing issue there. There is information on the website on that. So, I think the more we talk about this, even on, as we're talking about right now, that helps people be aware. If they have any need to come to a session or get additional information, then call the Community Relations Office, and we'll get them connected to information. And then, we're also intending to do, after this first round, primarily with our parent and school community, we'll, we'll go out and get additional feedback from others. But some of these topics so directly impact parents that that was the priority to go there first. Whatever information we need to help get you, that information prior to you making a final decision, that's what our focus is right now. Once the Board makes a final decision, then there's a whole nother round of the communication process that has to start as far as educating people about what is in, what the bond question is, what's included in that, from an educational point of view, because we have a duty and obligation to do that education piece, just to let people know what the Board's decision is. And that probably would also include a lot of civic groups and other kinds of entities that might not be as closely attached to our schools, so.
Any other thoughts?
One other thought I have, the next meeting, you know, my view is that we've got all these different schools with needs, and, and we need to start to get into some different scenarios, whether we group those together, start to be able to whittle down the, the list of choices and go through a process of elimination and, and hone down the decision, and that's, to me, a somewhat long and arduous task, but it's what I think this Board needs to go through.
I have.
A prior, a prioritization. I know the bond task force gave us that prioritization, and I don't know, ultimately, it's the Board's decision, but again, we need to depend upon the bond task force, we need to depend upon input from the community, as well as staff, as to how we prioritize that, but that's certainly something we're going to have to get to.
Yeah, I mean, I, excuse me, I certainly don't want to diminish anything the bond task force has done. I, I personally feel that as a Board, we need to understand any of the decisions that are made, and, and that's going to require a bit of the details.
That was going to be my comment, if there's a way we can put these in chunks, because we have this exhaustive list of every school in the district plus new schools, if there's a way we could chunk it together somehow in a prioritized list, not, not that that would be the final list, but the bond task force did assign years and, and kind of voted on it and stuff like that, so maybe if there's a way, and I don't know how to do that, I'm just thinking out loud here, to, to put them in chunks, to sort of, to, to, so it's not as overwhelming as me just reading through the list like I did tonight before I came here, trying to figure out, okay, what in the world does all this mean? I mean, what do I choose here? It's like taking me to Baskin Robbins and asking me to choose one flavor, and I can't, hard time to do that.
I personally agree with that, I think that there's some national, or natural geographical sections in the district that we could do that, and try and, in my mind, you, I look to focus, okay, what is truly growth-related that we have to address, and what is that going to bond? And then, some of the other aspects, aspects of the bond, such as the sixth and ninth grade issue, that then would go on top of that, and maybe there's a delta that would come off if we, you know, we did that. But to me, the, the foundation of it all is what do we need to do to address growth and facility needs as a first hurdle?
Some of, I, I have, took some notes here from the conversation tonight, so here's a beginning of a very rough agenda, and we may be having more than one meeting, but on this particular topic, the focus next time would be on carrying over the growth topic, and, and then, and getting a deeper understanding on the Board's part of the existing facility needs as it relates to growth in the original area, as it relates to growth that we're, may need to purchase new land sites or use existing ones. My hope would be, because I think this will help put in context that previous discussion about what our schools really look like, is Greg doing an overview of our prototypes, so that you know by, there's different ways to look at these chunks. One is by looking at our prototype schools, what happened at the North Views, the Ridge Views, the Fair Views, you know, what do those schools look like? Those are some of those earlier schools. What are the schools of, of the late eighties, the Haven Crofts and on, those up through Pleasant Ridge, those since two thousand? And he's got a nice presentation on that that helps, kind of puts those in chunks. And then, the other thing I heard you talk about is looking at, coming up by then, of a criteria for our elementary schools, you know, what was our target for our elementary schools, both in terms of services and demographics and size. One of the key pieces you have to understand next time is, if we have our current configuration, what's your list of projects that you need to take a look at or needs? If you change the configuration, what that looks like? So, that, that's a, that's a piece that you, that I know that we haven't spent any time on, that is part of that area. An attending issue will do some research on modular units for short-term needs and get that back to you. We also, what I thought we would prioritize as another chunk. We also, what I thought we would prioritize as another chunk is taking those, the schools in the red on your balance scorecard. And there were a group of those out of the eight, I think four or five, that we don't have a solution listed there. So that's where we would come up with alternative solutions and try to walk you through those. And then we have that priority list by the Bond Task Force. You can't really look at that until we go back and look at, what does it have with same configuration or not? So I'll try to structure that together. This, I want to make sure that you have the amount of time that you need to go through this. If we need to schedule other meetings, if we need to go longer here. I think this is such an important topic, talking just about Central and Ridge View and thinking some out-of-the-box kinds of things there. You know, that in and of itself is a chunk of a discussion. So I'll keep all these things. We'll try to package this in a way that makes some sense. We may get to a certain point and still have about half of what this topic is that you need additional time on. Maybe that goes to November. Maybe there's some other alternatives where we can get in communication. And then I'd also like to reiterate my invitation that if you felt like, for example, on that priority list, both the emerging and the priorities, any of those schools you'd like to walk through that you feel like you don't have, aren't comfortable with, maybe to take one or two with me or a staff member. And then within, between now and that meeting, and maybe even following that meeting. But we'd be glad to do that as well. And I think we could do it by prototypes. So you don't have to see every school, but we could pick out some that might give you a sense of, what does it look like at Indian Trail, for example, that looks like it has capacity? What does it look like when you walk through that school? And that's an eye-opening experience there as well, so. And if you think of other things, just email them.
I think that's really good, Pat. I think maybe another consideration that's even harder, perhaps, to get our arms around are the financial implications, that when we boil all this down to some extent, I think we're going to make a decision, at least I think we will, based on mill levy, based on financial implications, based on what we think we can afford, based on what we think we can pass, based on what we think the public can, wants to afford in this whole litany of lists of things there. So I think we need to dig deeper somewhere along the line here regarding, as best as we can estimate, given Mr. Deaner's good information tonight, how are those factors going to play out? And where is this mill levy going to fit? And then on top of that, we have operational costs. You know, new operational costs we have to take in consideration. And on top of that, we have to hypothesize to some extent, what's the state legislature going to do? So I think all those factors, as best we can, I know we're reading crystal balls here. But I think in order to communicate this to the public, our recommendation, I think we have to have as good an understanding as possible, given all these factors, of the financial implications, because I think, at least in my mind, that's going to determine the size of the bond issue. The hard thing is going to be, what's going to be in that bond issue? That's hard as well.
I can tell you that right now, you know, we're having, we're doing parallel work here. And one of the things that we'll do, if November is to really get, study the sixth, ninth, the configuration issue a little bit more, that becomes maybe the beginning of the discussion of different scenarios and costs, because I think that's real critical in that piece. You know, I'm saving the December special meeting for really getting, now, if you want to speed this up, you can. But saving that special meeting to really look at different scenarios. And I think we can, based on the information we're getting from you, other work that staff's doing, getting these lists as sort of priority chunks, and having a good understanding of that, come back and say, here's what you have to do. You don't have any choice. And here's what you can do, and it can be, you know, within your tolerance ranges. And then here are some different ways that you can shift some projects around. And then you can determine whether you want to stretch that or not, or take that off the list. And I think we've got some options that we could come back on. They're going to be, they're going to be less than what's recommended, not recommended, the findings of the needs for the Bond Task Force. But they were very clear to say that those are our needs. Many of them, very short-term and immediate, but not necessarily all of them. And in some cases, let's say the support facility, they're saying to this board, and maybe in a future bond elections, you need to think about a support facility for the long-term growth needs. That may not have to be in this bond. And there may be other things that we say that do need to be in this bond. You've got a recommendation from three to six pieces of land to buy. You know, that's an issue you're going to have to wrestle with. You may probably need, I think Chris would say, at least three. I think what they were saying in their discussion, you know, the land costs are going up. Your location for land is going to get more and more limited. So, you know, in a future bond election, you might be buying something that's not where you want it to be, but it may be the only thing left as we faced with Madison Place. And so I think we can come up with, here in this piece, here's a range of what you think you can do. So you might say, well, it's not six new land sites, and it's not three, but we think we can get a fourth land site in there. I think we can come back with those kinds of options for you. And I think you're going to find that on an affordability basis, that we can do quite a bit here. Also remember, those other bond packages, which were smaller, also when the district was smaller, were also coming about every three years. And so we're already behind in terms of our cycle. And the longer it goes, the more that builds up in terms of the pressure. So we need to address this, but we've bought a little bit of time here to do this right, I think. And I think everybody's got to be comfortable with this. We've got, just like Mr. Parker said, we've got a one-time opportunity, maybe, to look at this in the whole big picture. That's what we've bitten off here, not in just an incremental strategy. We've taken a look at the whole big picture. And that's going to be in the best interest of this district in the long term. Because if it doesn't make this bond, at least we know the needs out there. We can ship away at it someplace else, or we come back at some point in the future and say, we need to address this again. I think there will be options for you, so. So I think between now through December, this is study, 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 learn, 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 communicate, communicate. And, you know, it would be, I'll just lay it out, it would be nice if we could have a decision sometime in January from the board. It'd be nice, but that's totally up to the board.
Okay. Any other comments or questions?
One quick question. I think last time, Mr. Churchman made the request for giving us some significance of changing the middle school or junior high thing, how that would relate to an improvement in AYP, or how it would address that. And I would just like to re-request that information be provided at some time, not necessarily.
Dr. Banikowski, do you want to get any clarification on that while the board members are here? So make sure, so I'm not translating.
Reiterate, relap, just to say that again. I'm very tired.
Basically, if we're looking at making this a very drastic change, okay? We've said that, you know, that we've placed, you know, the advanced placement scholarships and things like that, okay? How will this address the way we achieve AYP and No Child Left Behind requirements? What data is there available on that that would justify something like that? You know, like I said, I don't need an answer now, but I think, was that the, if I remember right?
Yeah, just expand upon it. I mean, to me, in the sixth to ninth grade configuration change, there's a lot of different aspects that need to be looked at. But one of them is what's the tangible educational benefit that we are projecting to-
Certainly.
-to achieve as a result of that? And I'm not asking you that tonight, or for that tonight, but-
You just got me geared up, and I was just ready to go. I might add just a couple of things, though. Certainly, the Bond Task Force's requirements were to look at, how could we provide accelerated enrichment opportunities for our students in grade six, nine? And we looked at that area. And certainly, we had many factors that came forth in that, providing opportunities for advanced math and science, not just for a few children. You know, I think so often people think we're talking about 4% of our population that are identified gifted kids. Right now, if you look at the data that was provided and the data that was grappled with by the Bond Task Force, we have nearly 30% of our students, when offered onsite, are taking a course above their grade level, taking algebra when they're in eighth grade instead of waiting until ninth grade. So we already have students, a much wider range of students than just 4% gifted kids. 30% of our kids, or more, could be taking advantage of accelerated enrichment opportunities. But we also looked at the factor of the challenged learner. And I'd say that really drastically came up as we talked about sixth-grade students. Certainly, you know, any child in sixth grade who has to take a special education resource program, Title I reading, Title I math, in ELL programs, those students are pulled out of their regular classroom in order to go to that classroom. When you're in a junior high setting, that certainly is one of your 50-minute classes that you are assigned to. You're not missing another class to come to that. That's just the nature of how things are organized in elementary school. We call them pull-out programs. And if you talk to sixth-grade teachers, they would say to you, often, we never see our entire classroom because they're being pulled out for different support services, important support services. So as we looked at, certainly, we would never look at anything that would damage our chances of achieving AYP and improve student learning. We believe that, what we've looked at, all the many factors, is that this would strengthen our opportunity at sixth, seventh, and eighth. It would also strengthen, and I would think our high school staff would speak to this, when you have students that are preparing for 10th and 11th grade Kansas assessments, you do not have them in the ninth grade year. Not that our ninth-grade teachers aren't slightly in tune with those assessments. They don't give those assessments, they're not as connected to those assessments. So as we were looking at also the acceleration and enrichment, certainly, we did not forget the challenged learner and some of the benefits that might come up with that. As you look at trying to analyze, well, how does it impact districts who are not configured this way? What are their AYP scores? If everything is held the same, same kind of student population? There are not a wide range of school districts in the United States that are configured like us. So it's hard to make comparisons based on configuration. You know, the National Middle School Foundation had an article recently. 95% of the schools in the United States are organized either 5'8" or 6'8". So that is the most common configuration. Certainly, 9-12 is the most common configuration as well. So as we looked at data, we had to do comparison with other organizational structures. We had to take a look at the enrichment acceleration opportunities. But we also had to keep our mind on that prize, if you will, known as increase in student achievement on Kansas assessments and achieving AYP. It is part of the rules of the game that we have to look at. So that was part of the factor as well. So that, just a little nutshell.
As I look, Dr. Banikowski, at where we are as a district performing today, and I couple that with what I get quite a few comments on, that parents have selected this district for the configuration that we have today, I believe that we have to extrapolate that into, knowing where we perform in relation to the state of Kansas and the national average, what would this configuration get us in specifics over and above that? So we can do the return on educational investment analysis, so to speak, and understand that.
And I think we have to look beyond the academic portion. We also have to look at, we do not want any organizational structure that does not consider the developmental, social needs of students. And I think that would be false for us to think we're not educating the whole child. And as we grappled deeply with this for many hours on the Bond Task Force, that certainly was a factor and a piece in there. In fact, it was probably the factor that we began with in, as we talked about, different ways that we could provide enrichment acceleration opportunities. Sixth-grade centers, ninth-grade centers, adding more staff at the elementary level that had expertise in certain content areas. Those were all discussed, and certainly, we talked about both the academic achievement opportunities, but also looking at the developmental and social needs of students. So we grappled with that. You'll have an opportunity to grapple further with that as well, as we, and the same thing that we're grappling with as we go out and talk with staff and parents. My sense is that there's still a gap here as far as what you're asking for. And it may be that that piece, to say that there's a direct, that there's something that you can say now, it's kind of like looking ahead on estimating for the bond and/or planning for growth in the future. We know there are factors that contribute to excellence and achievement. We know those factors. We know what it takes in terms of, on ACT, for example, you can have an average ACT score, but if you, we call them the core scores. If the kids that have taken the college preparatory program, if you pulled their scores out, the ACT scores are higher. So when you have alignment of coursework and performance in coursework, it aligns with a higher ACT score. I mean, that's standard. So we can make some predictions and some assumptions on that, but may not be able to go out and say, if we did this, you would get this. Another way to look at, for example, the ninth grade issue, is ninth grade is 25% of a student's high school experience. And when you look then at what students have access to in that one-fourth of their high school experience in a junior high setting, you have a much smaller, more limited option, whether it's in mathematics, whether it's in science, whether it's in electives, languages, or whatever. That becomes, we can show what students would have access to, and then make certain connections to what does that mean? If you can take more than geometry or algebra as your two highest levels in freshman, and you could take algebra and trig, or in some cases, pre-calc when you're a freshman if you were in a high school setting. We also know at sixth grade, you know, what does it mean if, for example, on Avid, I would give, I've given this as an example before, but we're making some assumptions here. You know, that Avid, which would focus on the middle student to get them prepared with support to access higher-level courses when they're in sixth or seventh grade, that the model that would help take that one grade lower, which is where they say it should start, in fifth or sixth grade. We make certain assumptions that if we can get kids that support, that parent support, that access to that expectation, they will be taking advanced placement classes that over a period of several years, it's going to impact what coursework they're in in secondary, which will also impact what the ACT scores are. So those are the kinds of things. I think maybe we need to do a better job of coming back to you. And I hope that's what we could do in November, because I'm not sure how much we can tackle at one time. But that, I hope, we can really get into the depth of this, maybe at the November special meeting. We'll have some of the feedback, we'll have some of the questions. We are developing frequently asked questions and responses to that right now. You will have heard sort of the flips of, with the current configuration and a changing configuration in the October meeting, and understand kind of what the facility needs are. And then this is just another chunk on that for your understanding and for our discussion, and for you to give direction to us on what you need to know. So we'll try to go out and do a better job on getting this profile in a way that might be more helpful. But I don't know there's a single source we can go to on that.
Good, thank you. All right, it's six after nine, seven after nine. I think we're at the end of our special session. Thank you all for your participation tonight, and thank you, staff, for all your help in this great discussion we've had. We're adjourned.